We come to you in prayer asking for change. In a time of confusion and disagreement, we ask you for direction to lead us to heal our differences and come together in unity. Our country suffers from a deadly disease that only you can cure and heal those that are sick. We ask your comfort for those grieving the loss of a loved one. For those facing the loss of business, show them the way to rebuild and move forward. Show us compassion for others and lead us to help our community recover and grow stronger. We ask for protection, help, and safety of our employees, our families, and our residents. We pray in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
First item on agenda is approval of the minutes. Consider approval of January 19, 2021 regular enclosed meeting minutes.
No approval.
Second.
Question by Councilmember Hughes, second by Councilmember Aldridge. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Agenda adjustments, I want to add an item after number 11 to discuss some comments about our electrical rates.
No.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Aldridge. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. I have no unannounced allegations. Administrator reports, a request for a change to contract two, phase two, to utilize unspent project funds. Adam Iker is here if we have questions and any kind of forward hour. Make a presentation, please.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and members of council. We do not have a formal presentation tonight. What we have brought for you tonight at the request of your staff and with our recommendation is using the very last of the phase two project funds to address and issue at the wastewater treatment plant. You have two, for those of you who have visited that plant, if you recall, at the older part of the plant, it has a burn around it. So during heavy storm events, there are two pumps that are used to de-water the site to keep the water level from rising. Those pumps have been in service for probably pushing 70 years now. One of them is not working, the other one works but is a little bit at risk. And so we have received approval from the funding agency if you so desire to use the last funds from the phase two project to replace one of those pumps. In our opinion, I think your staff would support this, that this is something you would need to budget for regardless in coming budget years. And so if you so choose, you can include this in the project funds as a change order to the structure of the contract.
And this would be something we would do regardless of what decision council makes on the method of how we treat subjects later.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, that is correct. Yes, it's not related to the treatment process, it's more of just general maintenance for the site.
Council, any questions?
No approval.
Second.
Question by Councilmember Hall to approve the change, second by Councilmember Dry. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor.
Number five, your municipal calendar is in your agenda. Anyone have any questions or comments? Moving on to the consent agenda, number six, ordinance 2104 is to appropriate CARES funding in the Department of Public Housing and Insurance Proceeds in the general fund. Number seven is ordinance 2105 to amend the assistance to firefighters grant budget. And number eight is confirmation of the ADVC Board of Directors and their nine is a proclamation for the National Future Leaders of America Phi Beta Lambda Week. No approval.
If I just may, the calendar for the ADVC Board of Directors, I think it says 2020, I think that's just up there, but 2021, but it's showing 2020 on the attachment.
Thank you, I think that is an error.
No approval.
I would like to pull off the PBL, I'd like to pull off number nine just for it to be read, just because it mentions some folks within our community that I think need that recognition.
Mr. Aldridge, is your...
No approval with the exception of number nine.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Council, all those, second by Councilmember Towns.
Yes, thank you.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Movement number nine, the proclamation for the Phi Beta Lambda Week. Ms. Hall, would you read that?
I will indeed. Before I start this though, I would like to publicly recognize Dan Hazlett. Mr. Hazlett has been a fixture at Stanley Community College even when it was Stanley Technical College. And he has been the energy and the excitement behind many, many, many students over on the hill who have gone through PBL at Stanley Community College. Councilmember Townsend and myself at different times, yes, me before you Dexter because I'm a little bit older, we're both involved in this organization. And Dan Hazlett not only has done things on the hill for Stanley Community College for that particular chapter, but he has served in the role, in leadership roles for both the state chapter and the national chapter for PBL for numerous years. Whenever he reached out to me about a month ago, he asked if I would do this and because of COVID, nobody would be here. And he even reached out to me again over the weekend and I said, yes, it's on there and we got it taken care of. And in my response to him, he said, well, I'm working on the state conference as we speak. So just public recognition, and he has no idea that I'm doing this, to Dan Hazlett and to the hours, many, many, many hours that he has given unselfishly to this organization for many, many years. Proclamation, National FBLA PBL Week, February 8th through 12th of 2021, Future Business Leaders of America Phi Beta Lambda. Whereas Phi Beta Lambda and Future Business Leaders of America develop confident, aggressive business leadership, whereas PBL and FBLA strengthen the confidence of students in themselves and their work, whereas PBL and FBLA encourage members in the development of individual projects which contribute to the improvement of home, business, and community. Whereas PBL and FBLA develop character, prepare students for useful citizenship, and foster patriotism. Whereas PBL and FBLA encourage efficient money management, whereas PBL and FBLA encourage scholarship and promote school loyalty. Whereas PBL and FBLA assist students in the establishment of occupational goals, whereas PBL and FBLA facilitate the transition from school to work. Be it resolved that Albemarle, North Carolina participate in the national designation of Phi Beta Lambda, Future Business Leaders of America Week, February 8th through the 12th of 2021. In doing so, the city council members applaud the aforementioned goals and recognize the continued contribution and successes of the Phi Beta Lambda chapters at Stanley Community College and Pfeiffer University. Particular recognition is given to Allison Smith for serving as the state PBL officer this year. The council members applaud the PBL chapters on their awards at the 2020 state and national PBL competitions, especially to Stanley Community College, for being named a state and national gold seal chapter, as well as winning first place in the state for its local chapter annual business report, and first in the state and third in the nation for its parliamentary procedure team. Special recognition is also given to Mr. Lee Pickler, Stanley Community College graduate and owner of Scan Online, who was selected at the state PBL Business of the Year for 2020 and one of two recognized at the national level. Council members also wish to, also wish all current PBL students of success as they prepare for participation in the 2021 State Leadership Conference and competitive events. These chapters have conducted programs and projects that have highlighted and have brought recognition to their respective campuses, Albemarle and Stanley County. Most importantly, they have provided the opportunity for leadership development that has resulted in outstanding citizens and business leaders. Albemarle City Council congratulates Phi Beta Lambda and the Secondary Division of Future Business Leaders of America and are pleased to salute them publicly during this week of national emphasis. Thank you all very much for doing this, and I will hand deliver this probably tomorrow to Dan Hazlett. So thank you.
I'm there, I have motion to approve. Motion by Councilmember Aldridge, second by Councilmember Lowry. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Under new business, consider amending the city policy to allow for remote public participation for quasi judicial proceedings. While I probably don't agree that we need to do this forever, I think under COVID right now, we probably don't have a whole lot of choice but to offer this. But I think after COVID, I would rather see most quasi judicial with everybody standing here in front of us rather than just hearing that by phone. But I would agree that at this time, we need to approve this if council so chooses.
So would you recommend that we approve it like, say, a one-year timeframe and then come back and revisit it?
That's totally up to council, or you can approve it with a date or without a date, totally up to you.
And the only thing we're doing is changing, if I look at it correctly, in subsection six.
When we originally adopted this, I don't think you could do quasi judicial, but that has now been changed. And we do need to allow quasi judicial during COVID.
And so just for clarification to the public, this would be anyone, anyone wanting to present before us, not just us as the body that would be hearing the information.
Students have standing.
Is that right?
Wait a minute, stop, back up now, tell me, are you talking about anything or just quasi judicial?
Quasi judicial.
If they have standing.
If they have standing, they still have to be disqualified.
Yes.
And again, I'm playing devil with this because there is a time that they have to be sworn, and they would still be sworn. Is that correct?
That is correct, and with the electronic participation, particularly with quasi judicial proceedings, beforehand they'll have to sign an affidavit saying that they swear that they agree to the revoked participation just so they can't challenge due process considerations after the fact. So there's a little more paperwork to go on with it, but all the procedural elements will be met.
Okay, so with that, if we were to approve this as it is right here, is that something that we need to have within the body, the policy, or the procedures that we would need to follow? If they decided they were going to do it this way, they have to do duh, 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 duh? I mean, is that something we need to include within this? Because I didn't see any of that procedural kind of thing in there.
So it doesn't have to be included in this, it can be just something that HRC does before every July, and this is just allowing that to happen, and the procedural by day-to-day elements will be handled by the planning.
Okay, okay.
So the sharing and all that would be done?
Previous to...
After they came and they wanted to do the quasi judicial.
They would do it previous with...
Prior to.
Prior to, prior to, I mean.
I agree that I don't like to do it, but we probably need to, but I would love to put a time on it, and if we need to come back and look at it, we just do that.
Mayor, if I may, in the policy in section seven, it puts stipulations on when participation can be filed openly, and I think it clarifies that it can only be during kind of a safe emergency situation such as this, so that could be set in lieu of a specific timeframe, so we don't have to come back and revise it and close it.
That's good.
Okay.
Safe emergencies, yes.
And the safe emergency still exists right now?
Right.
Yes.
Until which time it's lifted?
I was looking for conditions on how far advance do they have to notify the city clerk or...
Good.
Maybe I'm overlooking here, but do we have a specified...
So planning handles all the applicants that come from HRC, so that's more of a staff item, and I can work with them on time.
Further questions? Motion?
No.
Motion by Councilmember Hall to approve.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Townsend, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
One, one against. Motion carries. Number 11, Montgomery Avenue Road improvements. You have in your agenda a statement from our public works director of what it would cost to do Montgomery Avenue Road improvements. It is possible. Council, I guess, needs to decide if this is more of a priority than paving roads is, which I can only speak for myself, I think we have many roads that need to be addressed before we do this, but what's council thoughts?
I agree with you.
I agree. Do we, do we have the capability to track the count? At some point to see if it's seen market?
Right, yes, we can do that.
I don't know if the council wants to do that at this point.
Somewhat related to that, I talked to somebody associated with the business there on Montgomery Avenue that we talked about at the last meeting, and he said they have on average about two trucks a day coming and going, not counting dumpster service, but just in terms of delivery. It can fluctuate, but it's about 10 a week. If that provides any perspective on traffic going to that facility.
Comment? Is there any way, I'm just wondering, you know, it looks like the problem area is Montgomery Avenue, they're, they're involved springs. Just wondering, is there any chance that we could speak to the business owner up there and request that trucks use Ridge Street instead of Moss Springs? I don't know if that would eliminate the problem there where they're trying to make that turn. If you come up two blocks, it'd be basically one up two blocks if we...
I think there are trucks, there's trash, I think the solid waste collection, trash trucks, waste management trucks, use Ridge.
But I'm talking about trucks, the 18-wheeler trucks, we're one of the industry of their business.
And the person I spoke to said he would remind folks there to use different routes. Now, he did say that, you know, I think as we talked about at the last meeting, that what will happen is if somebody is maybe not familiar with it, they'll put it into a GPS system and that's the route they'll take. But they said they would work with us and try to let people know, drivers know the best they could, to take other routes.
So we actually don't take any action?
Council doesn't want any motions, we're not taking action, we're with all.
And I think this is good information for us moving forward, particularly with the next two weeks with looking at our goals and those kinds of things for the next year. I think, I mean, we know that paving anywhere is going to be going up. I mean, the cost of that is going to go up, or is going up. But I appreciate the proactive slash reactive work that has been done about making contacts with the...
And then we'll move on to the item that was added for the agenda adjustment. I think all of us have probably had a lot of contacts over the last couple of weeks about utility bills and asked that, many of them asked that council discuss that. And that's what we want to do tonight is discuss utility bills. They are higher this month, two reasons. Number one, the weather is colder, but number two, because of holidays, our number of days on the bills are longer, so the bill, there's more days in the bills this month, if I understand that, to decrease. Most of the problems are coming from higher usage. Unfortunately, the city has no way of addressing usage. Usage is determined by obviously the weather, but it's also determined by the house, the appliances in the house, the heat system, the hot water heater, electronics you have in the house, and what the preferences are of the resident, how they keep their house, maintain their house, especially temperature. We have no way of controlling that. We can't control usage. All council can do, and I think the city and council has done a great job over the last several years, is try to lower our rates as much as possible. Over the last six years, we've lowered our rates eight and a half percent. And hopefully we will be opinionable lower some in the future. But it all depends on what our wholesale rate is that we get right before our budget every year, and we will not know what it'll be until we adopt our budget. So council doesn't have a whole lot of options, and they can't do anything with usage. I would encourage people, if they're having a usage issue, and most of them are, seeing increase in average daily use, especially for January. That's something we see every year because it's a colder month here. I would encourage them to try to have an energy outlet of their house and see if there's anything they can do to help decrease their energy bills. Council, any comments?
Mayor, if I may, or may make this comment, I'm not sure with the pandemic we're going through right now, I know a lot more folks are working from home, I know some folks have shortened work schedules, I know a lot of our students have been doing remote learning, I just wonder if that's, if that situation combined with the cold temperatures and things of that nature could be having an adverse effect on these, on these energy or on these power bills and driving them up to a certain extent.
Well, to that, to that comment, folks that are working from home now, if they're working from home totally and they've not been in the past, then their house, you know, that would be, that would be a play into it. I will say that in my talking with people and trying to not defend things but just giving them information, I basically have stood and will stand by there are three variables. And one of those, like you said, is the length of time in a billing cycle. And as I indicated to somebody just yesterday, during the months of November, December, and January, not only is it colder out there, but the city recognizes holidays, as many holidays between those three months, as the city recognizes almost within the rest of the calendar year. No other time are there multiple days off other than Thanksgiving and Christmas, and then in January, both Martin Luther King and New Year's Day. So that automatically throws off folks at the meter readers, and it throws off billing, and it already throws that off, and additionally continues to lengthen that time. If in a regular month, you've got 28 to 30 days, and then you've got a bill that's 35 or more days, that's already 20% more. And I really tried to say that to people, as well as what you've just indicated, Mr. Aldridge, that more folks are staying at home all the time and working from home. And just the usage itself. One of the things, when I got my very first contact, must have been now a week or 10 days ago, I don't know, I sent something to Michael and to Nikki and to Judy, and I think you all were copied on, the rates of comparable towns. Some of those towns were other electric cities towns, and then there were some private companies, REA and Duke, about what their rates are. I will continue to remind people as well, having, being a part of electric cities and having our own folks, whether it's the meter readers or the lineman, when something breaks down here in the city of Albemarle or with any of our customers, the time it takes for folks to get energy and electricity restored is minutes compared to hours with other, with other utility companies. So, you know, there's a lot of factors there, but I think that individually, just as you all have indicated, those are the major ones right now. And the time, and we all, like you said, we always have it, and the main reason, in my opinion, other than usage, is the number of days in a cycle.
I still think, and I appreciate what the city's been doing to be proactive as far as putting information on the city's Facebook page and, I assume, on the website. That information that they put out last week about over the past six years, how the city have reduced electric rates by eight and a half percent, I think information like that is good. Also, you know, we all look at the social media posts and things of that nature and see what the concerns and the vibe of the community is. Maybe we can continue to do such things as, one thing, for instance, that I constantly see and hear is we paying for them lights downtown.
Oh, yeah.
And we heard that for years now. But what we need to do is put that information out there. I think like what we, think a year, last year maybe, somebody gave us the information about on the average, how much it costs to operate all those LED lights in downtown, things of that nature. I believe will go a long way, you know, and just keeping the general public informed.
For example, I went back and looked at my November bill, so that's the first one I found, it was 29 days. And I looked at the one I got, actually today I believe, 35 days. That's an extra week. So, and the good thing about, I like about our statements is you can go back a year, and no matter how many days are on this cycle, you can see a year ago how many kilowatts you used per day then, and how many you use per day now. And if it's more, your bill's going to go up. So I always try to keep those statements, you know, for a year or so, so I can refer back to and see why my bill went up.
And I think it's important, and that's what we're trying to do, is the city can't control how much power you use. All we can control, control is the price and the payment, that's all we can control. We can't control how much power a house uses. That's totally on the resident and the winner. As a business owner, the 35 days has impacted a lot of people in business. And, you know, if they didn't look at their bill and see that it was 35, you don't know. I have another house, hadn't been in it in a month, the water's off, the heat's on 64, typically it's 125, it's 280. But again, it constantly ran even at 64 degrees. And as a business, one, you're, hopefully you're lucky to be open there, other, there's a lot that are not able to open or run regular business hours. And, you know, those extra five days or six days make a huge difference on a large business that all of a sudden, it's like a landfall. It hits you, you're like, where in the world did this come from? But again, it's the awareness and of everything that you folks have talked about here tonight. And we're not out of it yet, we're going to experience more before we ever see it get better again. And I look at it as if we work together, communicate, there's nothing that we can't solve, we shouldn't be, we shouldn't be getting upset about the things that we can't control, only the things that we can influence. So for, you know, just be patient with what's going on, say your prayers every night, and hopefully things are going to get better before they get worse. You will, council, keep this in mind, and we may discuss it some more at another time. Okay, moving into going to come around the table, Mr. Townsend, Mr. Aldridge.
Yeah, real quick, Your Honor, just wanted to congratulate Brandon Bean, local Albemarle, Stanley County native, who is now, who is currently the general manager for the Buffalo Bills. He had a pretty, pretty strong role, Colin Patrick, and he's been up in Buffalo as the general manager for several years now, just got a contract extension, but doing a really, really phenomenal job. As you football fans know, they made it to the AFC championship game and almost got to the, to the Super Bowl this coming weekend, but felt a little bit short, so I just want to say congratulations to Brandon Bean for seeing several, several awards this year and keep up the good work. And for that matter, we've got several people in our community that are in the NFL, I think probably more so than I ever remember. So it's, it's good to see local folks doing really well, so I appreciate that.
Ms. Hughes.
I just have a question for Pete. I know there was a session today for the ADVC, and I was real curious to know how that went and how many came, and what was the focus?
Council, we, Joy is working on the number of people that appeared on Facebook Live and Zoom, so I don't have those numbers tonight, but I'll get those to you before the end of the week.
Okay.
I thought all the speakers did a great job. There's probably, as we did an assessment after the event today, there's a few items that I've directed staff to improve on, and we will approve those. And all in all, I was...
What was the objective, I guess, of the...
Yeah, the overall objective, the main point I wanted to bring across to the business community, the business owners, and really the citizens, is that we're here to listen, number one, and I want them more engaged, more involved, and to implement their ideas and suggestions for our economic development plan. As I've listened and learned over the last three and a half months since being here, a lot of feedback about the direction of economic development and downtown and Main Street programs is more one-sided from the city, staff directing it more to the business owners and property owners, and not enough listening and input from them. So that was the primary goal, but also to bring in the allies that we work with to make sure that the business owners and property owners understood the resources that were there and... understood the resources that were there and what direction we're going in to support their efforts.
Okay, yeah, I'd be very interested to hear how many attended. And you can give that later.
We're doing that assessment now and I'm going to have a full report to you all by the end of the week.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Ms. Trish.
I don't have anything.
Ms. Holland.
Just, I guess, important, will you bring to us the ideas from all of us? Ideas of the whole, everything, when you give us a report?
I'm not sure.
The feedback from, the feedback at today's retreat? Will that be all in some type of?
That will be in the report. We've, we're getting feedback from each of the participants as well as the staff that were involved.
Okay.
So that's all part of that.
Just FYI, I tried twice to get on and I couldn't. If my computer were still on at home, it probably would still say that the host is waiting to let you in.
The Facebook Live worked well.
Good.
The Zoom, not so well. There were some technical issues there. In talking with Owen, who did a great job in bringing that back online. So he did yeoman's work to get that done. This is the second event we've had at the theater. One of my recommendations coming out of this assessment will be to possibly evaluate that facility and maybe spend some funds to bring the AV system back up to a standard where you could have, you know, Zoom meetings and other meetings there for that purpose. So may need to be some upgrades to the technology in that facility to, if we're going to continue to have these types of events in that facility.
Okay.
And that comes from speaking with Owen and Lisa as well, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a reminder that this week and next week, I believe, Waste Management is noting to residents, isn't it, this week and next week? About their changing, is, or is it this week they're notifying people to start next week? I can't remember.
I think that's right. I know cards to those that were changing, their day was, or their week was changed were probably sent out two, three weeks ago.
Right, so those folks who did not get a card will continue to be on their, on what they've been using. I just think there's been some, and you know, some people don't depend on social media. Some people just depend on what they see in their hands. There was an issue today and I have spoken with the manager and I've spoken with the police chief about parking downtown for Pfeiffer. So if you get any comments, and I'm just saying this to my fellow council members, every parking space downtown is available for whoever. There's nowhere on any street, on Third Street, on Fourth Street, on Main, on North, there are none that cannot be used by the public. Therefore, they can, they all can be used by our students at Pfeiffer. So just because a parking spot's in front of your house does not mean that parking spot is yours.
Part of the main.
Part of main?
From Third Street and back toward town, toward the square and Second Street and the main downtown approach, it's got two hour parking. Everything else, it's no time.
No, no, well, and I didn't even address the timing. But for Pfeiffer students, right, besides, but what I'm indicating is in during the resident, in residential areas, just because there's a spot in front of your house does not mean it's yours. It is all public. And I don't want Pfeiffer to feel like that. I want them to feel welcome and a part of what's going on. And this just, it really bothered me this morning. Throw something out for your consideration. And I know we do not have a glass ball to see in the future. But we have an opportunity to have some live music at City Lake Park. First of all, let me tell you that we are doing Food Truck Fridays at City Lake Park March through, help me Bill and Dexter, March through October, is that right?
Yes.
Once a month. And we're going to do that even with COVID. People just can come, they can get their food and leave or go wherever. But we've had an opportunity to have some live music on April the 9th, which will be our Food Truck Friday, Friday. It is the Friday after Easter. I knew you were going to ask that. I'm just very concerned, do we do that? If we do this, I mean, I have, I have arranged for the band to be here. And I've just, I've told Lisa that I would work on raising the money to get this band here if the city doesn't have the money for it. People are dying to do stuff. They're dying to be out and go and enjoy the outside. I just don't know if we need to commit to something or if we can't commit to something that soon. I have no idea. I mean, the governor's got us in this.
How soon do you have to have it?
Oh, I don't have to, I mean, no, I don't, I mean, I basically have said to these folks, you know, they've said to me, you've got us if you, if you want us. And told me how much I needed to find to be able to bring them. And I'm sure, you know, even if it's the end of March, well, no, probably the middle of March, I probably.
The second meeting in March, would you make a decision?
Uh, probably.
There is a limit.
Yeah, there's still a limit. And, you know, like I said, we cannot, we, the city, cannot do something that's going to bring that many more people together. We just can't do it. And we don't know, you know, at the end of March, if it's going to be extended or not. So, I mean, the end of February, if it will be extended or not. We'll look about it again. And in the meantime, if anybody's got any companies that they have out there that would like to bring a name, name time band or big time band, let me know, they can help me sponsor it. And I don't know if anybody else saw, this weekend, we've got some, not all of our flags are the same. Flags at Courthouse Square have been on half staff for some time. I don't know if they've been fixed today or not. But I didn't know why they were half staffed and nowhere else in town. Police Department, City Hall, all of our fire departments have all been up. So I don't know what's going on with that. I just would like for, whatever, whatever, whoever's authorization we do it by, I hope that we do it at the same time for all of them. And I guess my last comment would just be to Nikki, and I should have asked her about this. Nikki, you've asked us to look at some pages getting ready for next week?
Yes, ma'am.
It looks like to me that the only thing that we would have anything to look at would be pages seven, eight, and nine, is that correct?
In terms of responding back to my email, yes.
Okay, thank you very much. I just want to make sure that my cohorts up here are on the same page. Thank you very much. That's all.
Mr. Drive.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Holland.
No.
Mr. Whitney.
The only thing I would say is I did, was on Facebook this morning, you see the presentations and I thought it was very good. So don't know how many people were on, online watching that. And I thought the information that was put out to whoever, especially the downtown businesses, on what is going on with the city, some of the projects, plus Business Center, plus Pfeiffer's presentation, I thought it was all very, very good. And the technical difficulties weren't that bad. We got over them. Another thing I would mention is we, my wife and I went up to Chapel Morgan Park this weekend for a walk. And we pulled this kind of humorous, I thought, we pulled into the street, pulled up to, through the park and there were cars everywhere. And we went all the way to the end, turned around and came back. There were like 90 cars. And we looked around and didn't see anybody. It was like, it was weird. We saw maybe half of those people. And then we saw the signs, it was just off turn. So when we went walking, we could hear it all out through the woods. So we saw tags from Virginia, from Florida. I don't know if they came just for that. I wouldn't think so, but there were that many people up there at that park.
They were.
So, you know, those things, the one here, City Lake, Oprah, Baden, I'm not sure if there's any more. But those things have quite a draw. And which brings me to another thing. I've got a few things I wanted to mention during our budget session on some possible deferred payments. See if there's anything we can do about a couple of volumes. But I just thought of bringing that up. We just happened to go up there and I was shocked. There was that many people up there.
Want to have anything else? I'll entertain a motion if we go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 318, 11A, 1, 3, 4, and 5, to prevent disclosure of information that is privileged or confidential pursuant to the law of this state, legal to consult with the city attorney to discuss real estate and economic development. Motion by Councilmember Aldridge.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Drive. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.